I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. And also, please be advised that our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Oliver Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Councilwoman Worthy?
Here.
I know that Councilman Back and Wilson were here earlier, so Councilman Cannon?
Here.
And Councilman Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Heath Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the day. We thank you, Lord, for your blessings. They're always appreciated, Father, and never deserved. Thank you for the rain that replenishes currently, Father, and certainly the shelter that we have from the storms. We pray for the safety for our community all around us, Father, through this day and days beyond. Lord, we pray that you give us the direction to go through this meeting in a way that pleases you, to understand with clarity and full discernment everything that comes before us, Lord, and just let us know your will and follow you in it always, Father. We give you all the praise and the glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We'll have our update today, and we'll have it from...
Chief Reed.
Chief Reed. City Clerk told me your name, but I...
It happens. Mayor, Council, my name's Will Reed. I'm the chief of the Gaston Fire Department. Ms. Gaither wanted me to speak for her today because she isn't able to attend because the EMA, the Gaston Fire Department, and the Marshall County EMA are conducting training at the EMA office today, as well as they are working our severe weather event that's unfolding. So she wanted me to give you all her apologies. She wanted me to let everyone know that we still need to get more citizens to take the COVID vaccine. The vaccination sites are all open, and there's currently no waiting at the sites. Vaccinations are given at the Health Department Tuesdays and Thursdays from 8:00 a.m. until noon, and that's every week. If anyone wants to know all of the vaccination sites, they can go to Alabama Department of Public Health's website, and a list of all of our area vaccination sites are there. And as Ms. Gaither has said before, our goal is herd immunity. That is through the people that have already had COVID, as well as the vaccinations that we need to continue to get, and we're not quite there yet. Fortunately, our COVID numbers are down in our community, and they continue to be dropping, but they're not absent. Gaston Fire Department and the surrounding fire departments are still responding to COVID cases weekly, and both hospitals do still have a few COVID patients. So it's not over yet. We pray that there's not an upsurge in the future, but we have to be prepared for that. Ms. Gaither wanted me to let everyone know that the EMA conference call will be tomorrow morning at 11:00 a.m. as usual, and she will be on that. And as a side note, I would like to say that today is International Firefighters' Day. So I want to say that I appreciate all the men and women that work for the city fire department, as well as the surrounding fire departments in our area and county, because they all do a good job, and they do deserve thanks, so I thank them. So is there anything else I can do for y'all this morning?
I have a question. Do you know if we have encountered any of the variants for the coronavirus here?
I don't know if we've encountered the variants in our community. I know the variants are in the United States. There are several different variants that are here. As far as in our community, I do not know. I will have to get with Ms. Gaither on that.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank y'all.
We do appreciate the fire department and the job that they do. We will continue our agenda for today. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Community Development Committee Work Session and City Council Meeting that was held on April the 27th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of April the 23rd through the 29th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Guys, could somebody in the audience pull that door, too, back there, please?
Mayor, do we have any proclamations? No action will be necessary regarding the resolution on 1024 Fourth Avenue in District 5. The nuisance was abated by the owner. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of resolution assessing nuisance abatement liens against property. We have five locations, and I'm going to call out the information for all five of these. Anyone wish to speak may come forward. The resolution abating nuisance abatement at 316 Albany Avenue in District 1, and this is the State of Alabama Right of Redemption of Bruce F. Stevens and M. South Bank at We have a resolution assessing a nuisance abatement lien at 525 Allen Street in District 1, Kennedy Woolley, $3,291.40. Item 12 is the resolution assessing nuisance abatement liens at 113 Pine Alley Street. The tax assessor has the property address as 1306 Kentucky Avenue in District 1. State of Alabama Possible Right of Redemption of Lamar Graves, $6,016.40. The next resolution is abatement lien at 1500 Kyle Avenue in District 3, and this is State of Alabama Certain Rights of Redemption of Jennifer Schach and Brenda Giles at $2,616.40. We have the next item, which is the last item of these liens, 218 Ninth Street South, also identified as 902 Elm Street in District 4, Mark Anderson Fambro, Citizen Bank and Trust, Hope, 360 Ministries, is $7,966.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Does anyone like to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all five resolutions.
So moved.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all five resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all five.
Our next item is a resolution appointing member to the Industrial Development Board. This appoints Janice Cheryl Johnson for a term expiring July 25th, 2027. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Madam President, just a point of clarification, because I honestly didn't know this, and I just want to share this with the public. The restrictions on the IDA Board appointments are that any appointees must be a voter and taxpayer of the city and a member of the Chamber of Commerce, a Board of Trade, or other similar civic organization. I didn't know that, but that just...
Yes.
No.
Okay.
I'm sorry. The Industrial Development Board, Paul, thank you.
The Chair will entertain a...
We have a motion in second, but we haven't voted.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next resolution, appointing and reappointing members to the Turned Time Avenue Architectural Review Board, and this appoints Tim Blevin and Lee Ellen Brahm Hafer, and reappoint Susan Little for a term expiring May 20th, 2023. It appoints Adam Soli and reappoints Jamie Sledge for a term expiring May 20th, 2024. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next items on the agenda are items 17 through 19. The next three items are regarding the easement requirement to construct drainage improvement in the Wild Haven Circle area. The resolutions are a drainage easement from Bo and Jennifer Arthur, a resolution authorizing acceptance of permanent drainage from Mary Ellen H. McNair, a resolution authorizing acceptance of a permanent drainage easement from Frank and Betty Shrew. Do I have consent to bundle these three together for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Do I... Okay, that was to agree to put them together, so do I have a motion to adopt these three items?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all three resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all three resolutions, items 17 through 19.
The next item is authorizing agreement with the Gaston Edwah Patriot Association, and this is for the city to co-sponsor the 2021 Fourth of July fireworks, and the amount is $6,500. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is authorizing revision to the Community Development Housing Rehabilitation and Repair Program. Loans for housing rehabilitation and emergency repairs for qualified low to moderate income owners will be maximum of $4,999.99 each, and all qualified owners will receive a 0% five-year deferred loan. And the loan will decrease 20% per year beginning the second year and is fully forgiven at the end of the fifth year if they are still occupied, if they still occupy the home. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have a couple requests from the city clerk's office. It's an ordinance conveying property located at 1213 Alabama Avenue to Thomas Felix Vicente and Lydie Francisco. Asked for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today at its first reading and as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous consent has been given.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Then I have one more from the police department. It's a resolution providing a retired badge and service pistol to retired police officers. Asked for unanimous consent, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Madam President, I have one, please. It's a... I'd like to ask unanimous consent for this, please. It's authorizing agreement with MBA engineers to perform a geoengineering evaluation for the new fire station on South Levin Street at Banks Park.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. Is there any more new business?
I have one, Madam President. This comes from the city clerk's office. This is a resolution authorizing the satisfaction of a nuisance abatement lien for property located at 1507 Kentucky Avenue. Asked for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any more new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have one. Asked for unanimous consent to... It's authorizing agreement with Chance Rides Manufacturing Inc.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Move to adopt.
Those opposed, okay, consent has been granted.
I'm trying to get ahead. Just give me a head there. Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Madam President, I didn't get to do a discussion. That's what I was thinking about when I was moving so fast. This is $1,040,000 that's set aside at the park to purchase two electric trains up there to replace the old gas operator.
All right. Thank you. That's all our new business. We have department reports, and we'll have Mr. Blackwell to come. He will give us an update on the SPAN program and tell us all about what's going on there.
I repeat that February 2nd of 1981, the city program opened up in Gaston. It was way ahead of its time, as most programs now are looking at community-based programs. Gaston had one of the first community-based program. There are seven other programs like ours, SPAN programs, in the state. The one in Gaston was the first. Due to the success of Gaston, other counties decided, hey, we'd like to have a program just like that. So there's other programs that have, other counties that have a SPAN program. So that means 40 years we've been in Gaston, which is a very long time for our program to be around. The reason we've been around for 40 years is the community support that we have. We're thankful for the Gaston City Council. We are in a building that they have refurbished. It's the old General Forest Building. We're there. We're very appreciative. To give you kind of an idea of what we do, as I said earlier, if you take 100 kids as a freshman, 90% of those kids are going to graduate, 10% are not. So our goal is to always take those kids, the school systems will call and say, hey, somebody's getting behind. Can you work with them? Absolutely. Or if somebody's not going to school, can you work with them? Absolutely. Somebody's in the classroom, they disrupted the class now for the 10th time, can you work with them? Absolutely. And that's what we try to do, is take the kids that some people have given up on and kind of give them a redirection of life so they can be successful. Our age range is from 12 to 19. So we work with middle school kids and high school kids. Our middle school kids who get behind, we do everything we can to get them back in the right grade so they don't get behind, because usually if a student fails one grade, the odds of them dropping out increase. Our high school kids, we work with their credits to make sure they can get back and graduate high school. Some students can be seven, 10 years old and not have any credits, but those kids will have to get a GED. With a SPAN program, we pay for that. We make sure there's no out-of-pocket expense for any family that ever goes to our program. I don't ask for school supplies. That's taken care of. I'm not going to ask you to pay for the GED. We'll take care of that. So there's no excuse that you'll have to say you can't be successful. Nowadays, you have to actually want to be unsuccessful to be that, because we will make sure to put you in that spot. If you really want it and work for it, we can get you there. We help kids that don't have clothes to get a job. We had a student about four years ago, he's still with the city now. He didn't have the clothes he needed to go out and weed eat, so we took him to Walmart, got him some boots, got him some clothes that he needed to get his job. We try to take care of all the needs that they have besides just academics. Now, we have two councils. They have a group every single day. Part of their program is not just the academic side, it's also the behavioral side. If somebody's acting up in class, there's usually a reason behind that, so we want to find out what that is and work with them so they can move forward in life. Number-wise, before COVID, our fiscal year before COVID, we had 102 students in our building. Before that, it was 97. Before that, it was 77. So there was an increase in our student population every single year. When COVID hit, that dropped our numbers significantly, because we weren't there. Everybody went virtual, which was hard for us as a staff, because a lot of our kids need that constant supervision and encouragement that they may not be getting at home. So our numbers went from 102 to 58 the last fiscal year. I don't know if I might have said 52 earlier, but actually we've served 54 this fiscal year, since October 1st of last year. And I hate saying numbers, because that seems so informal, because when I say 54, if I say 102, each one of those numbers has a name and a story behind it. So no, I do say numbers, but I hate just looking at it like a number game, because that's not really what it's about. It's about helping every one of those kids that come through our program. And they were asked earlier where our students come from. Every school system, from Gaston City, which we appreciate Gaston City, because they let us use their credit recovery, and they also feed our students. The county, Atala, DHR, Eagle Rock Boys Group Home, the JPO's office. At least five to 10 kids a year come out of state who try to enroll in a school system. They don't have the credits needed to become Alabama students, so they'll come through our program to kind of get reacquainted in what we try to do. So it's a wide variety of kids that we work with. I just, again, want to thank y'all. We're having a 40th anniversary, a huge celebration at the venue on September 18th. Obviously, the council members, y'all will be invited for that. We look forward to it, having some past students be able to speak and give their story and testimony of what their program's done for them. Any questions? And if you've not gone to our program, and this is not just for the council members, it's for people who are listening right now, I encourage you, give us a call, 256-543. You can spell city out on your phone, and you'll get reached. I encourage people to come by and see what we're doing. We're not babysitting kids. We're actually helping these kids out.
Kevin, I just wanted to say thank you for you and your staff and what you're doing, and for the... It's amazing, a 40-year program like this. You know, so often all we hear are maybe the negative things that are happening, but here is a really shining star. You guys are on the... We always hear the term "the front lines." I mean, you are definitely on the front of the front lines. And I'm reminded of the story of the fellow walking along the beach, and there's all these starfish washed up on the sand. He's throwing them back one at a time, and somebody says, there's thousands of them. Why are you doing that? Why are you taking the time to do that? That doesn't matter. He picks up one and throws it back out in the water and says, well, it mattered to that.
Absolutely.
So what y'all do matter, and you're exactly right. Those are not just numbers. Those are human beings, with souls, that y'all are making a big difference in, and I'm proud that the city has been a part of, just a small part of, helping provide locations and funding and things like that. That is really outstanding. I look forward to September, to the anniversary, to the celebration. I look forward to hearing from people that have been through your program that are now successful, and I think we need to really promote those. We need to really let families see what can happen when somebody's down and maybe not doing well, that there is hope, and there are people that are willing to step forward and stand in the gap to make sure that every child has an opportunity to be successful. So thank you for what you do, and thank you for your staff also.
I appreciate that. And one quick thing for a sit-down. Now, we're a January to December program, so we're there in the summertime, and we're free during the summertime. We're free. Whatever you're going to get at summer school, we do the same thing for free. Some school systems are really good about letting our kids come and work, but I know there's kids who've gotten behind virtually. And our expectation is to have a lot of students in the summertime, and I said earlier, we want a lot of students. You know, I don't want somebody to get behind now and then go in August and try to go to school, and they're already two classes behind. Well, now they're trying to play catch-up. There's no reason to do that. There is a free program out there who want to get you back on grade level, back to where you need to be at. So I'm hoping that schools will throw some kids our way. And not only that, you know, say you're not behind, but you want some tutoring. Say you're really bad on math. We're going to be there. We can do that, too. So we're just encouraging a lot of families to use us, because we're going to be there. So I do appreciate y'all listening to me, and again, I really do truly mean I thank y'all for really supporting the program. It does mean a lot to us and our staff. Thank y'all.
Thank you again. At this time, we have remarks, council. Mayor, you have any remarks?
Yes, ma'am. Since we're talking about Christmas at the Falls, I'll give you a little history nobody knows. Several years ago, a couple, Quinton and Barbara Pavy. Most of the people lived on Knockalooa Road up that way, at the Falls, and they had a meeting with several people, 15 or 20, I don't know, and invited us all there. Ben was in, he can add on to this. But anyway, they had an idea that we all pick out a certain spot and bring our own cookware and food and drinks and sell them at Christmas at the Falls. And so we all got together and did that, and it was a lot of work to start with, and then it got to be more fun, because it got bigger and bigger and bigger. And I'll let Ben add on to it. They wanted to... The people up there now, or before, that came to me and wanted to know if they gave us the project, would we keep it going and put all the money back in the city and the Falls? And we said, yes, we will. But Ben, you can tell, you knew several of those people up there, too.
If you don't mind me going next, I will.
I'm sorry.
In the middle of 90s, you remember, and we started off zero and tried everything in the world, but I ran into Bud Goff's in Jack's in the middle of 90s, and he was telling me, he said, you know, we're doing these things, why don't we start the lights? Get those things going bigger and better. And he just kept talking, and I've always been one that if you volunteer by talking, I'm going to let you do it. So I told him, I said, Bud, you got it. Well, he immediately went out and got Quint Pavy and Barbara, and by the way, Bud's wife, Pat, and their families, and they started out with almost zero, and they built those lights from that to however many million they were when we took them over. They also bought the first trains up there, replaced them, and they just did a good, hard job. It beat anything I ever saw. I went out there one time, and they were stringing electrical wires around, and Bud had on a pair of gloves, and the ends worn out, and his fingers were bleeding. I said, what in the world are you doing, Bud? Well, we got to get them in, we got to get them in, and it just evolved from there. But the day they turned it over to the city was the biggie, because we were losing about, I'd say anywhere from $350,000 to $500,000 a year in Knockalooa Park. After that, city took it over, it started gaining, and it's where it is today with all the added features. So I just want a big shout-out to Bud and to Quint and their families, because they were the bottom line. Yeah, thank you.
Councilwoman Worthy?
I don't have anything, Madam President, other than to tell people to go get vaccinated. We need you to go... I don't know the percentage of the people here in Gaston Edwah County that get the vaccine, but you notice people not wearing a mask now, and we did away, Mayor did away with the city ordinance for coming in the building, but like he said, at the Health Department, they give it on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 8:00 to 12:00. No appointment, just go over there. And that's all I'm going to say. We need to get people to get the vaccine, and I know some people on Facebook is talking about whatever, but people are hesitant about taking a vaccine, especially in our community, because of the Tuskegee Experiment. And then some people are talking about, well, they're going to track you. Listen, when you was born, they gave you a social security number, so they're already tracking you. So get the dang on... I would go and get it now, when they're giving it to everybody. That's all I'm going to say about it. I could go on, but I'm going to leave that alone.
Councilman Cannon?
I don't have anything.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes, Madam President. One thing, I just want to acknowledge the terrible tragedy that happened at Knockalooa It's just a really tough thing, I think, for, like Jen Wethington from the Parks and Rec said during the pre-council meeting, you know, there were people up there that cared for those animals day in and day out, every day, and my heart hurts for them. As an animal lover myself, I can only imagine what that'd be like. As an animal lover myself, I can only imagine what that'd be like. So, um, I, I, I wish them all the best and I know that Jen Wethington will come up with an appropriate plan moving forward to, to how to move forward and make sure that nothing like that ever happens again. The other thing, uh, the fire chief reminded us today that today is National Firefighters Day. So, uh, thank you to all the firefighters, I apologize, I know a bunch of you, but I'll say Jonah Harris, Jeremy Akry, Tim Ramsey. Those are the ones that are really close to me on a day-to-day, so thank y'all personally for what you do and thank everybody. On the COVID-19 shots, look, I've, I've had so many of these conversations, I've had both my shots. I never had any symptoms or side effects from either shot. It is an incredible peace of mind for me to know that myself, my wife and my 68-year-old mother-in-law who lives in my home are all now vaccinated. I can just tell you, it's a, it's a burden that I feel like I've carried on my shoulders, whether I realize it or not, as a human being for the last 16 months. And I cannot describe to you guys how much of a relief it is to finally have that full vaccination. I understand that people are hesitant and, 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 you know, so one of the biggest arguments I've heard is, well, it's just so, so new. You know, we've developed this vaccine so fast, we haven't really done the trials that we normally would have done. I'm just not wanting to be one of the first ones to get it, and I can respect that opinion. All I'm asking you to do is don't give up on it. Pay attention, keep watching it, keep talking to your friends who have gotten the vaccine. Keep reading articles about what the results are from these ongoing tests. Because if we can't get enough people vaccinated all at once, we're just going to have to go through this every year. People are going to have to get COVID shots like the flu shot. And it's going to continue to hamper our economy and our lifestyles and our relationships. So I respect people's opinion, not to be hesitant to get in the shot, but please just continue to do your research and pay attention. And when you get that level of comfort, go get the shot. Kevin? Thank you, man. I've been through that building. I remember years ago when we were trying to get the new space and you were working so hard, uh, you know, to come out of that old Gaston High School building and get in that new space. I know once you got over there, like he said, what'd you say, a week or a week and a half before you guys went virtual? So I know you're excited to be able to utilize that space and thank you for everything you do for the kids in this community. And the final, final thing I'll say is, um, we passed a resolution today to do the engineering, the geotechnical work on a new fire station, uh, over in Banks Park, which is kind of the border of my district and Councilman Cannon's district. And, you know, it's, this is also maybe a little bit of a public service announcement. But if you guys are upset with me at any time, and I'm talking to my constituents, please, in lieu of just screaming at me from across Broad Street about something, you know, just take the time and come talk to me. I'm not, I, I mean, I'm, I'll be more than happy to talk to you. I don't always know what all the problems are in the community, but I promise I'll try to help. I mean, when, when you pass somebody on the street and they yell, you know, you're terrible. You know, hey, if you need a job, why don't you come build something over here on South 11th Street since you don't have a job right now? I'm sure it made perfectly good sense to them, but I had no idea what they were talking about. So I'm assuming that was a challenge for more economic development on South 11th Street, so I'll respond to that accordingly. You know, things like building new fire stations in communities, uh, tearing down old single-wide mobile homes like we've been doing for years over in that community. And what Heath and the Engineering Department have been working on for two years to get South 11th Street repaved. That's how we fix economic development issues. I can only open so many joints in this town, I'm sorry, y'all, I can't do it on every street corner. But, uh, this city tries to improve, make improvements to infrastructure and quality of life. And the hope is that if we keep making investments in those communities with fire stations and road pavings and things, and building new high schools in those community, that maybe that'll help bring up the overall economic reality in those neighborhoods. And I promise that I'll continue to do that. But again, just some words of advice. Y'all all have my cell phone number, I've given it out 100 times, 256-399-3738. It's my personal cell phone number. Call me and I'll try to help any way I can. Thank you.
Counselor Worthy?
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to, uh, echo some of what Councilman Wilson said about Nakalula Falls, what a tragedy. And, uh, and appreciate our staff up there, how they've performed day in and day out. We've got really good people up there that know what they're doing. So, uh, it'll be, uh, handled properly and, uh, going forward, I'm sure it'll be better than it was before. Also want to thank Kevin again for coming and appreciate all the work that you guys do at SPAN. And, uh, also want to echo the Fireman's Day, uh, what a world would be like without our fire department. These guys running to the fire when all of us are running away from the fire. So to the men and women of our fire departments, we do offer a, a nod of thanks and, and are grateful for what you do for our community. And then last but not least, this is National Teacher Appreciation Week. I'm married to a kindergarten teacher that's in her 38th year of teaching kindergarten. And, uh, I have lived that life with her for the last, oh, I don't know, 14 months of doing two lesson plans every day for the virtual and for the ones that are in, in school, in class. And, uh, the hours, the seven days a week, the, the constant planning, doing something that you've never done before. It's all been such a challenge for our, our teachers, uh, and, uh, as it has been for the entire world. But it's been, uh, we're focusing on the teachers this, this week. So thank a teacher, if you have a teacher. I know there's some in this room that have done that just today, so thank you very much for your efforts. And, uh, you know, it's, uh, this has been a really tough 14 months for everybody, especially for our education system. I think they have all kind of plans, but I don't know how you can plan for a pandemic like this, uh, and cover everything. I'm sure there were some things planned for and that were, that were already underway. But some of the stuff, y'all, you just, you just can't figure it out until you get on, right in the middle of it. So hats off to all of our educators, uh, the superintendents and the principals and all three of our school systems in our county. What a challenge it's been, but I think they've met that challenge. And I think that we're all going to be better for it down the road, so. And I also want to thank the vision of the, from the mayor and the staff that we've had. The Nakalula Falls presentation today was just kind of, uh, refreshing to see what, what goes into planning and, and the things that it's done. I can remember hanging out at Nakalula Falls when I was a kid. And, uh, and it's much different today than it was back then. And it's just, uh, really an exciting place to see how people come from all over to, uh, to enjoy our, uh, waterfall and, and our programs that are up at Nakalula Falls. So thank you, Mayor, and your staff for all that. And, uh, that's all I have, Madam President.
Counselor Worthy?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of quick things. This week is, uh, National Nurses Appreciation Week. I think it runs from May 6th through the 12th. So, you know, as a community, as a city, let's just make sure we reach out to our nurses and, and, um, extend a, uh, a warm note of appreciation to them for all the hard work and sacrifices that they make. It's really important that we, uh, that we recognize our healthcare providers. And in particular, on this week, let's make sure we recognize our nurses. And, uh, the last thing, um, not sure when this will happen again, but I want to, uh, it, uh, send out a congratulations to the Gaston Alumni, uh, Chapter of Alabama A&amp;M University, as well as all of the graduates of Alabama A&amp;M University in the city. Alabama A&amp;M, this weekend, actually won the SWAC Conference Championship for 2021. And, uh, they were declared national champions, uh, in football, uh, for historically black colleges and universities. So again, I think that's an amazing accomplishment. Being a graduate of Alabama A&amp;M, I am extremely proud at this moment. And, uh, and I think it's a, it's a great opportunity to celebrate some of the great things, both academically and athletically that that school does. So again, we, we do appreciate that and congratulations to all the, the graduates. That's all I have.
Okay. I'm going to say, I guess the emojis on, uh, Facebook will start rolling now. But my heart went out to, uh, Jen them when she was saying that, how people were talking and were cruel to the workers. People use Facebook, Instagram to be cruel, to be mean and to be evil. Rather than to say it to your face, they use all those platforms. And I think it's a shame, uh, same the way they probably do you, uh, Councilman Wilson, and I know they do me. But I just, my heart went out to them to know that here some animals had been destroyed, had been killed. And rather than sending out condolences to those people who cared about those animals, they wanted to talk about them. And I, I have a problem with that, that's the reason why, as far as doing Facebook and Instagram. But it's, it's a shame that people have become so evil, that they have to use those platforms to hurt people. And so I just think that, you know, we, um, I know Councilman Cannon, uh, got ridiculed for saying, but I'm going to say, we need to be more prayerful. And we need to learn how to care about people. I ask for a motion to adjourn.